Hey.
Hey, we will call the regular meeting of the Nevada City Council the order. Today is Monday, May twenty second at six o'clock P M. Can you roll call, please?
And bar mitzvah here Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
There.
Steve Skaggs.
There.
Sandy's not.
And did notify she was not going to be able to make it this evening. So we will move into the first item, which is approval of the agenda.
For a second.
Dane and Steve. Being no discussion council, please vote. And that is approved, which takes us into public hearings. The first public hearing is for the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget amendment number one. Did we receive any written oral comments? No comments received. Is there anyone here to speak in the public hearing about budget amendment number one? Being none will close that move to resolution number ninety nine, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, resolution approving fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget amendment number one.
Move to approve.
Back it. And Brian. No discussion council, please vote. That is approved, which takes us to public caring number two, public caring on proposed development agreement with Oak Park Estates L C. We'll open that public hearing. Did we receive any comments? Anyone here to speak in the public hearing about development agreement with Oak Park Estates? Being none will close the public hearing, moving to resolution number one hundred, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, resolution approving development agreement with Oak Park Estates L C, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues of the agreement.
Move to approve.
Second Dane Barb discussion. Being none council, please vote. That is approved. The next one is. Okay, so, okay, so next one is work at public hearing on proposed development agreement work at LLC. We'll open that public hearing. Did we receive any comment? Anyone here to speak on the development agreement with work at LLC? Being none will close the public hearing, which moves us to resolution number one on one, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, resolution approving development agreement with work at LLC, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
Move to approve.
Second, Steve, Brian. Any discussion? None council, please vote. It is approved. And we did not receive the signed copies back for the next two. So we still probably need to do the public hearing and hold the resolution until next time. Okay. So we will go ahead and do public, the next public hearing D, which is public caring on proposed development agreement of cutting edge painting LLC. Did we receive any comment? Anyone here to speak on the proposed development agreement of cutting edge painting? Being none, we will close that public hearing, which then takes us to public hearing E, public hearing on proposed development agreement with Syngenta Crop Protection LLC. Did we receive any comment there? No comment received. Do we have anyone here to speak in the proposed, the public hearing for proposed development agreement with Syngenta Crop Protection LLC? We will close that public hearing, which takes us out of public hearing, civic consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second, Brian Dane. No discussion council, please vote. Hey, that is approved, which takes us public forum, which is time to decide for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less, and we do have a request to speak from Jamie Hugit about planting trees in right of way. So we'll have you step up there to the microphone and you can address the council.
Oh, good evening. I gave you a little little packet there of my research and I will just summarize. I went, I wanted to plant two trees in my parking, which has no utilities above or below. And contacted Country Landscapes to do so. That gentleman went to City Hall and was told no trees were to be planted in any parking in the city of Nevada. I had never heard of this, so I contacted City Hall and the rules were sent to me. Now, I, I did attach that to your packet. In which one is the city rules or the, the code, which was it's highlighted the code that planting restrictions, no tree should be planted in any parking or street except within accordance with the statewide urban design and specifications. Upon reading the sit, the specifications, my planting in my parking, which is sixteen feet deep, does qualify to plant those two trees. So I had a very pleasant conversation with two city employees, Jordan and Joe. And they were concerned, their concern was taxpayer money to take down old trees. And also, once we open up planting in the parking, you know, then everybody will want to do that. And there's so many services that go underneath within our park, our right of way or parkings. But. So. I did a little research there, which I, I gave some of that to you also. So. Granted, it does cost money to take down trees. But is the value of a single tree greater than the cost? To take it away at the end of its life? And so. Within my research, home values improved by having trees within the parking. Some of these are older, but about nine thousand dollars. It also increases the price of sell price of the house by seven thou, seven percent. And if it's within a hundred feet of radius within the right of way, the combined neighborhood is increased by thirteen thousand dollars. Crime is decreased by having trees within the right of way. In fact, in Cincinnati, Ohio, when they took down all the ash trees due to, which we're quite aware of. Crime increased in the city. And there's a, if you increase your tree canopy by twelve percent or ten percent, you get a twelve percent reduction in crime. If you look, it also reduces urban temperatures. The most interesting part of my research though was on, is on the second sheet. I found this website that also does an aerial view of Nevada. And gives us how many, how much tree canopy we have in our city and the benefit for just one year. And then opposed to my one tree that's left standing in my front yard. Over twenty years, my tree gives benefits for storm water mitigation, air pollution, energy usage, and carbon dioxide uptake of a little over seven hundred dollars. That tree's been there probably sixty years. So you can multiply that value by three. And in just one year, trees in Nevada give a value of over a quarter of a million dollars to the city. Which I think is just extremely powerful when you think of that information. So. I guess, looking at two things. I would like the city to consider because we do have a lot of, of right of ways that have facilities underneath or lines going across to pinpoint those areas that trees can be planted and maybe actively plant a tree within the grants, since we are Tree City USA and have been for the last twenty one years. And though also because I'm willing to spend about a thousand dollars on two trees in my parking, I would like the city to grant that permission for me to do so.
That's right on time. It's like you were doing that. Nailed it. So.
I just wanted to let you know, because council will deliberate, but because it's not for an action item, I just don't want you to be disappointed. There won't actually be action with me being. Okay.
And thank you for bringing that to our attention and for the good research you brought. I'll open it up for council for any comments.
I think we need to put it on the agenda so we can discuss it.
And do you want to just discuss this request? Or do you want more information about the larger issue?
Well, I've read, I read the code. I think it's pretty, I mean, like I said, we'll have to discuss it, but it's pretty black and white.
Okay.
I mean, if we want to discuss it, I mean, we'll have to discuss it.
If there was a way to maybe know where the places in the community are like first, where there's nothing above and nothing below because of how. That would.
There it is.
Okay, so we got our direction from council on that. Is there anyone else here to speak in the public forum, which would be topics that aren't on the agenda? We will close that move to old businesses ordinance number ten forty five, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, an ordinance providing for the division of taxes living on taxable property in the May twenty twenty three addition to the Nevada Urban Renewal Area pursuant to section four oh three point one nine of the Code of Iowa second reading.
Move to approve.
Second, Brian, Steve. No discussion council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to B, resolution number one oh four, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, resolution approving bond purchase agreement for the sale of general obligation urban renewal bonds series twenty twenty three A.
Move to approve. Second.
Steve Dane. Seeing no discussion council, please vote. It is approved, takes us to C, resolution number one oh five, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, resolution approving concrete crushing services agreement between Boomerang Corporation and City of Nevada.
Who do approve? Second.
Brian, Steve. Any discussion? None council, please vote. And that is approved, which takes us to new business. New business A is resolution number one oh six, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, a resolution approving the application of the Capstone Group to the Iowa Economic Development Authority Iowa Workforce Housing Tax Program. And I know there's great interest here and we have some residents looking for some informational counsel would like more background. So Brenda from Nevada Economic Development will give us all a chance to hear about the project and ask her, ask her some questions.
So, Aaron, do you want to pull it up as the presentation? So good evening, City Council and interested members of the public. I'm here this evening to talk a little bit about, well, actually I'll talk everything, I'm gonna tell you everything I know about the project that's being proposed for the renovation and reuse of the Story County Medical North Campus by the Capstone Group. What up? We're gonna put this to the front of the. Want me to move it, Aaron? Okay, there we are. Be patient, keep going. So again, my apologies if you were looking at the council packet. I recycled a resolution that we used last year to support a housing project. And in one place in the resolution, I referenced Cast Dodi instead of the Capstone Group. And so the developer that is, is looking to do this project is called the Capstone Group. And I'll talk more about them and what I know about them. So we'll move to the next slide. So the Capstone Group has assembled a team of people to work on this project. This is quite an extensive project. It's a large building, multiple buildings. So the Capstone Group is a nonprofit housing group with two existing housing projects in Iowa. And so these housing projects are focused on elderly, the current projects in Iowa. The project here in Nevada is not targeted for elderly. That doesn't mean that somebody that's elderly can't move into the project. So we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about the target market for the folks to utilize this housing here in a little bit. But the Capstone Group will be the owner of the project and they're leading the development efforts and they're the applicant in the state of Iowa application. Aspect Architecture is an experienced and respected arch, architecture team doing most of the work in downtown Cedar Rapids to rehabilitate and reuse old buildings. It's not news to anybody between the floods and the derecho. Cedar Rapids, Cedar Rapids had almost every building in their downtown area impacted. And single-handedly at Aspect Architecture has been involved in that. They've also have a great deal of success, uh, success with some of the state programs that are being proposed for this project. And I'll talk a little bit more about them and show you some of the work that they do. But they're going to be the boots on the ground, actually designing and involved in overseeing the construction of the renovation and the reuse here on our project. They're also working with a, a company out of Ames that's accustomed to doing the financing aspects of these projects. So the project, I mentioned it's a nonprofit that's going to be doing the project. So the tax credits, they don't have a tax liability, so they'll be working through the process of actually selling the tax credits. And so they'll work with Denny over in Ames, who's had a long time relationship, not with just projects in Iowa, but projects across the country, working with Capstone. I'll start by talking a little bit about the Capstone Group. I've included a picture of their project actually in Guthrie Center. So if you want to see some of their work, you can go and Google either one of those projects. Like I said, the work in one to date has involved these elderly assisted living nursing home facilities. So this is a picture of the Guthrie Center project. I've been invited, city staff has been invited to actually tour those facilities if we if we desire to do that. We thought it was more important to actually tour the work of the architect and the person that's going to be overseeing the Nevada project, so that should it proceed and get the funding support that it needs from the state of Iowa. So they have the Winslow House Care Center in Marion and the New Homestead Project in Guthrie Centers. So that's a little bit about the work of the Capstone Group in Iowa. Want to talk quite a bit about Aspect Architecture. So this is a quote, you can Google Aspect Architecture. You can see some of the articles that have been written by Steve, their lead architect. I've included for the council a quote from one of the magazine publications in Cedar Rapids. Steve is an architect and self-made developer who purchased the building after years of buying other properties and performing much of the demolition and construction on them. The smaller costs, if you might have been a shopper and shopping in Cedar Rapids, you may recognize that name of that building includes sixteen efficiency and sixteen one-bedroom apartments across two floors. It is tailored to young professionals. The apartments, according to the lower piece, would feature a variety of fully restored historic elements, including exploded, yeah, exploded wood timbers, wood floors and exposed brick on the walls. On the particular project in Cedar Rapids, the ground floor is gonna have a coffee shop. I've had coffee in that coffee shop. It's a reality project. And at the time he was discussing some green energy on the roof in conjunction with other things going on in that building. So they acknowledged Steve for his time and his continued success. And again, I would encourage you to Google Aspect Architecture, Architecture of Cedar Rapids. And you won't have an opportunity to see for yourself some of the work that he has done. I want to talk and I asked him to actually send me pictures for the two projects that I've had an opportunity to go through. The first one is called Kingston Landing. And it's an old school. Imagine a two or three story old school. In this particular project, there's three bedroom, there's studios, there's one bedroom, really dependent upon how the building laid out and what made sense. But included photos of, so you can see that the doors have been updated. The kitchens are modern. There is very, no matter where I was in the properties, I have the chance to see a lot of windows. And so these are examples of different types of windows that may have been in the, in the historic building that got included in on the project. But again, you certainly can Google Kingston Landing. It is, you know, one of his projects that he's done in Cedar Rapids. Another one I want to feature is Cornerstone. Was an old factory in Cedar Rapids, about a block away across the river in Cedar Rapids. And one of the things I noted when I went through this particular property is just how they even utilized some of the old columns that were part of the manufacturing facility. And kept those really true to form in the facility. So again, note the very large windows, very open area. And, and again, he's, I had a chance to walk through a project that's in the midst of construction to see, you know, is it messy? Is it dirty? Is it disruptive? And I was very impressed with the professionalism of the workforce that he had working as well as the really tidiness as it relates to a construction project. So Aspect Architecture would be overseeing the project. They would be the boots on the ground in Nevada. And they would be working on behalf of the Cornerstone Group, again, nonprofit housing group to bring this project to reality. I want to talk a little bit about what they're proposing for the Nevada project. This would be a phased project starting as early as late fall. So we know that the residents haven't been moved out of senior care. The new senior care project is under construction and it has to be done by the end of next year. So this, because they would be phasing the project, we would see construction beginning on the clinic portion and the old hospital. Really before we saw residents move out of the facility. Probably one of the most important takeaways is that this is market rate housing. Don't let the word tax credit, take your mind to other places. This is market rate housing. That means regardless of what income you are, regardless of what age you are. This is a place you can go and live. You, if you're tired of having steps in your house, you can pick a ground floor unit here, free up your house for somebody else. But it is market rate housing. It is not any other sort of housing. Anybody can move in to these apartments. They're targeting forty to sixty units. And we'll know here in the next couple of weeks for sure where we're landing at in terms of number of housing units. I would refresh the council's mind and other folks that work in in economic development, that we've been tasked by needing five hundred units of housing in Nevada. To meet the needs of what we anticipate is going on well and what's going to be happening in the future. Two hundred and seventeen of that five hundred are targeted for rental housing. We've been lucky, we've added about forty housing units in town that are rental. This would add forty to sixty more and it would get us about halfway there on our rental goal. You've heard tonight, an unbelievable amount of development agreements get approved at the city. I go to council meetings across two counties and I don't know the last time I held three development agreements get approved or project expansions. What I would tell you is we're working on two other expansions in existing industries where I've seen the, the initial, excuse me, initial information on those expansions, all told, it's going to be at least another hundred new jobs. And the midstates application will be going to the state in June. And we know that's about twenty or twenty-five. We've talked pretty openly about that. The state, the city's already improved their incentives on that project. So our job goal, we are the envy of every other community in the region and how, how, how the job we've done and attracted new business as well as supporting our, our existing. So our need for housing is going to continue to grow. The key aspect of this project will be that anybody can go and rent that. If you're a, somebody moving to town to take a great welding job at midstates, this, this could be an apartment for you. Do I just mentioned, if you want to get out of a house with steps, you can consider one of the options here. So it's open to everybody. The project is pursuing state of Iowa incentives. Workforce housing tax credits are really a way that this particular project can take and sell those tax credits and inject cash to support the project. This is going to be a very expensive renovation project. And we haven't seen the final numbers on that. But I, I think preliminary was over twelve million dollars. So this is a very large project and the incentives for this project are key to making it happen. They'll also be pursuing brownfield redevelopment credits. And that's really to deal with it. There's things like asbestos, things like that, that need to be dealt with because it's an old facility before it can be reused and renovated for current housing. Hey, I want to talk a little bit about time is the worst enemy to any old building. And this has been a concern for all of us. It's been a concern for the hospital board of directors. It's been a concern for economic development board. It was a concern as we put together the Nevada twenty forty plan of what's going to happen with that building when everything goes out to the campus south of Highway thirty. And so this is a project that's in the Nevada twenty forty plan. This is a project that's in the N E D C twenty twenty three, twenty twenty five strategic plan to identify a developer interested in the renovation and reuse of this property. To date, I'm going to give you a project kind of where we're at to date. The company has been here two times to actually walk through the property. And we hear from them almost daily on things and information that they're looking so that they can prepare their application and best plan for the development of this property. The Nevada team has traveled to see the projects in Cedar Rapids twice. I've been on both of those visits. We had city staff at one of the visits and we had hospital staff on one of the visits. It's important to us not to take the word of somebody of what they're going to do and how, what the work's going to look like. So we went, we toured the facility. It's in both of those locations, toured a construction site, checked their references with the city of Cedar Rapids. And what I'm telling you is that we're thrilled with the opportunity to be able to pick up this very unique housing and reuse a building that we've been concerned about in terms of what will happen in the future. The letter of intent has been signed by both Capstone and the Story County Medical Center Board of Directors. Both are committed to proceed to the next steps, which are the state applications. The state application work has begun. They are very familiar. Aspect Architecture is very familiar with how workforce housing tax credits work, how brownfield credits work. And they will be doing that. And this is why we're here tonight, is we need the action of the city council in support of that application. The N E D C Executive Board of Directors has approved partnering with the city of Nevada to provide the thousand dollar match per unit of housing for the state application. So we're coming with you tonight because it's an important project for the economic development and advancement of Nevada. We're coming forward with, with a commitment to fund half of your local match requirement. And we have verbal approval by Capstone, which again, should the project proceed, will be done in a formalized agreement. Since Capstone is a nonprofit, would not always be paying property taxes. But we have negotiated already an agreement where they would pay an annual payment in lieu of taxes. So that's what's happened to date and what has really brought us to tonight. And where we're at with next steps. So the first application to go in will be the state of Iowa workforce housing tax credits. Again, I would stress, there are no income requirements. So you don't have to fall below a certain income. You don't have to fall above a certain income. This is a non-income driven project. It's an incentive by the state of Iowa to increase housing units. We're woefully behind in housing units in the state of Iowa. This is one of the most attractive incentives the state has to support new housing units. It's designed to keep projects attainable for everybody. If we were trying to make a project rentable and we had to cover the pure cost, uh, on a project. Without incentives, it, it wouldn't be attainable to even the wealthiest person who wanted to rent there. The application is due June ninth, and that's why we're here tonight. Um, the brownfield tax credits are designed to support the environmental aspects of the project in order to support reuse and renovation. That application has not been released, but it will be due this fall. And, uh, and again, we have strong support financially from the N E D C in support of the project. And, uh, we hope that, uh, the council again would, um, support that the project. Again, my apologies that on the resolution, uh, in one instance, it shows, uh, custody instead of the Capstone group. I would take questions from the council.
Council, any questions for Brenda?
Did I hear you say that there's no taxes on this building?
They are a nonprofit and they have not been, they have not paid taxes, uh, Jason, on their projects in Iowa. So as we stayed today, I'm not going to, uh, risk a revenue find at some point in time. We've set the expectation, they're either paying taxes or they're going to make a payment to the city in lieu of taxes.
Other questions? Might think of more, but thank you Brenda for that background. Um, and then we do have, um, some public comment as well that we can move to. Um, and then we'll ping you if there's something we don't know the answer to. So the first is Lindsay Dieters, um, and then on these, again, please keep your comments brief. And if someone else gets to a point, uh, that's already made it, we'll just ask that we don't repeat the same thing. Let's start with Lindsay.
All right, well, hi council, I am Lindsay Dieters, I live at five thirty-seven Sixth Street. Which is right across the street from where this project is going to be. And I apologize for my, um, lack of knowledge on this, I just heard about this last night. Um, I'm neither for or against this project, I literally lack the information to make that informed decision. Um, so that's why I'm here and Brenda, I appreciate you, uh, giving us that, uh, um, that slideshow. Uh, if it is possible, if we could get a copy of that, that would be wonderful. Um, I do have some questions, however, uh, living across the street. Uh, parking has always, was always an issue when the medical center was the hospital. Um, you know, they would have the students come and they would park in front of our driveway. We had to call the medical center many times to have those cars removed. Um, I would like to know if for sixty units, what is the parking situation and plan that they have in place? Um, I, I just do not see how, you know, and, and that's assuming, you know, sixty units, one car per household. You know, that you'll probably have people with multiple vehicles. So I would like to see the parking issue addressed. Um, you know, uh, uh, let's see, I have these all listed as questions, I'm going to change them to just statements to show my concerns. Um, you know, it, more information on what the construction phase, how that would impact the neighborhood. Um, what, uh, changes in the traffic pa- patterns once the development is complete. Considering sixty units being right there on Sixth Street. Um, you know, are we going to see, are we anticipating more car accidents while people trying to pull out? Um, you know, right in front of my house, um, let's see the, the aesthetic of the neighborhood. I appreciate the, uh, um, the information regarding, you know, aspect architecture. Um, but I, but it would, you know, I would like to have a little bit more idea of what their plans are. To see how that is going to impact the, the aesthetic of our neighborhood. Um, uh, let's see. And i- infrastructure, that was another one, um, you know, sixty units. We're talking sixty dishwashers, sixty multifamily showers, all of that stuff. While the hospital now serves, you know, single people in each unit. Um, we're talking about having an increase of families. What kind of pressure does that put on our water systems, our sewer systems in that neighborhood? Um, you know, I wonder if those, those issues have been addressed. Um, how long is construction expected to last and what kind of impact should we expect in the neighborhood? Uh, regarding those and, uh, where exactly we are, we at in this process? And are residents going to be able to continue to address concerns and issues through this? Or, you know, I mean, if we're putting sixty thousand dollars into the application, does that mean we're locked in? Does that mean we have no say to change or anything like that? So that's really, you know, all I have, as I said, I'm not for or against. I just really, as a person who lives directly across the street, would really like a little bit more information. And just to keep updated on the progress and, and what's happening, so thank you.
Lindsay, what'd you say your address was again? Sixth Street, okay. Anything else for Lindsay? We'll open it up for any others that would like to speak on the issue. Um, if you do want to speak, why don't you go to the microphone and state your name and address for the record?
I'm Kathy Solko-Maternock and I live at seven one seven Fifth Street. So I'm on the one block up on the other side. And Lindsay addressed, uh, addressed some of the questions or concerns I had. One of them that I'm concerned about is our historic neighborhood is. Multifamily apartment dense at this point. Um, I myself have dealt, dealt numerous times with landlords, owners that do not upkeep their property. And that is a concern to me. Um, what, what is the access going to be for the city to, um, maintain? What the architectural group says they're going to do? Because right now, that's not happening with rentals in our neighborhood. I've gone to the city, I've gone to, um, I've filled out forms, I've called landlords. Um, and it's, many of them are not being maintained and that is a real concern to me. Now, I know this is a new project and that's going to be new for what, five years or ten years? And then what's going to happen? Because what's happening in our neighborhood? And if you go down Fourth Street, if you go down Sixth Street, if you go down Fifth Street, it's the same. Right now, you can go down, um, Sixth Street and see a big piece of cardboard in the front window. That's been there for two weeks, this is going on the second week. And it's rental property. That concerns me in our neighborhood that is already dense with multifamily rental units. And this is going to add fifty to sixty of those. That concerns me. The other concern I have is, um, that has not been addressed is the traffic on Fifth Street. Which becomes a thoroughfare. I have talked with Sergeant Martinez several times about that. Um, or excuse me, that's not the right term, is it? Excuse me, Rick Martinez, several times. That people use Fifth Street in lieu of Sixth Street because there are no stop signs. And I've had him bring out the speed camera a couple of times, but there's no real good place to put it with those hills. Um, that concerns me because if we have families and we have, and which we do, and we have little people. That, that's, that's a concern to me. And it, like Lindsay said, it increases the traffic a lot in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Council, anything to, Kathy? Just seeing if they had any questions for you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Uh, Dean Rogers, six one six Fifth Street. Uh, I live right across on the west side, right next to the parking lot that the, the employees used to park in. And since, since the long-term care has been there, has been pretty well empty. And, and we've lived there since ninety-three. And we had, I had no trouble with that and, and what my concern in now is like you said, if there's that many more new. Additions in there, well, what's going to happen to that parking lot next to me? Is it going to turn into a gasco, come and go on all the time and, you know, walking across the yard and, and. In a number of situations, so. Does that property go with that or is there any development for that particular square right next to my house?
Oh, my understanding is the parking lots go with the property.
So what would, that would be parking for the apartments, huh?
There'll be required to, to have parking for residents.
So right now, you think that would be?
We, we do have parking requirements, so anytime there is a, a, a project, whoever the developer, whoever is constructing that. That project is required to follow the parking requirements that we have in our code. So there's going to be sixty units and there is an amount that they are, they are required to have parking for. And I can't tell you that off the top of my head, but it is, I would be happy to take down your information and, and, uh, get that information for you and send it to you afterwards.
Yes, I, I mean, my concern is if that's full all the time coming and going, how it's going to affect the value of my house? Should I want to sell it and move in?
I have two apartment complexes on my same block and I can tell you firsthand, it hasn't, it hasn't decreased my value of my house at all.
Okay, well, if you can get the information to what, what it would be, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to address the council on the issue? Um, there's, okay, you can go if you want, but she's also down.
I live at six twenty-one Sixth Street, which is directly east of the hospital and I have lived there since nineteen sixty-five. So I've seen them build two additions on that building plus, but my concern is now that I just heard that they're going to be. Multi-age, I thought it was going to be like a senior care or more of that. What provisions are they going to make for young children? Because Sixth Street's a busy street and I mean, there isn't any really decent place for it to go. I mean, my children are young, they could beat feet down to the four H grounds or out to the swimming pool, but nobody does that anymore. And I'm just wondering if it's going to be multi-age, I assume there will be young children, school-aged children, high school kids involved. And just what kind of provisions have they made for that? Because I've seen a lot of stuff come and go and with the drugs and all the rest of it this time. So when, and again, like everybody else, I'm concerned about the value of my property. Just a comment.
Thanks Judy. Do you have any other public comment? Now, we have some good questions tonight and we'll be compiling Marla's will some information that can go out to, to answer some more questions we may have. Um, for slideshow purposes, uh, that our city staff has copies of that, so you'll be able to get that from city hall. If you want copies of the slideshow, you can leave your email addresses tonight and we can send it out. Um, so with that, we'll open up for our council.
I, I mean, I just, I think just so that the folks here know going forward, like what other opportunities, there was one question raised as far as. You know, other times they have chances for input or whatever, just walking through that, just so they know what, you know, what the next steps are.
It'll be, I don't know if Jordan can speak to that, but what other steps we may need to take or be asked to take during this process? Cause part of it is, I mean, it's not our property, so that, that limits the amount of things that, that we may have to do.
Yeah, so tonight we're being asked to support this project at the state level in tune of thirty thousand dollars. The other thirty thousand will come from N E D C, which they have already approved for that. Uh, like, like Mayor said, we do not own this property, this is, uh, Story County Hospital's property. Uh, and what they are doing is they're going through this process to see if this will work for them. Like Bren- Brenda said, if it does not work, if the state credits do not get approved, the, the project will not happen. Uh, so the state has to approve that project in order for this project to happen. We will not know that until later on in the fall is what you said. Uh, cause that first submission is June ninth for that. So, uh, the next step sort of wait to see if the state accepts it. And if the state does accept it, then they will be putting forth plans to the city, site plans for the city that we will be able to review and look at.
Well, and I want to thank all of you for being here before I forget too. I, I'm glad we have folks here who are interested, I think this is a better way to have conversation and, um, all get on the same page. And so I'm thankful that we have good participation tonight. Um, so, and I can just give some background too. We had the Nevada twenty twenty plan, we revisited that in twenty fifteen as a community summit. And the number one need that came out of that in twenty fifteen was housing. So it's been something we've continued to talk about, it's probably been talked about even longer than that. I look at Brian because he's been here the longest, but, um, it's definitely something that, that is an issue. And for this property in particular, I've been very worried about it for a long time. Because it could easily become an albatross here in the community if we don't get it in the right hands, do the right thing with it. Because it is a very expensive project, as you heard Brenda say. And there have been a handful of large name story county developers out of Ames who have been through that, who didn't want anything to do with it. Which has also made me more concerned for the future of the property, knowing that the folks doing all the building in Ames. And doing historic renovations of schoolhouses and stuff over there, didn't want anything to do with it because it was more than they wanted to take on. So with that kind of framing, I guess we'll, I'll turn it back over to council to discuss and potentially take any action they would like to do.
Brad, I think you answered the question I had, if we for some reason did not choose to proceed with this, what would happen to the building? It sounds like it would probably become vacant, someone else could buy it and try and turn it into apartments. I mean, I don't think any of the other outcomes are very good, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, uh, aside from demolishing the building, which I don't know if we necessarily want to do that because of the expense that it would cost for that.
That's multiple millions.
Yeah, um, but yeah, I mean. Safe thing, safe, safe way to bet would be if, if it becomes dilapidated to the point where no one wants it. Then it's going to be beyond repair and then we will be forced to.
Somebody to pay to tear it down, basically, yep.
Yep.
One of my fears is that we would be being asked for millions to do something with, with the property.
I would agree.
Different than thirty thousand, so.
This, this seems like a much better option.
Jordan, as I understand what you said, let me make sure I understand. We're, we're partnering with N E D C to, to provide most persuasive. And I, we're, we're putting all the, all the, all, all of the resources that we have access to, to, um. This tax.
To submit an application to receive these tax credits.
So this is similar to what we have done. We put our best foot forward for some of the things that have been happening with the mainstream community and those renovations. Um, and so, when, when you put it, when you put it like that for me, that, that also helps, helps me think about. Um, you know, thirty thousand dollars. Is it, it's an, it's an investment, it's a, it's a possibilities perspective. Um, that we might not have access to in another time if the building has a chance to start to deteriorate.
Correct, yeah. And we, and, and like you said, Barb, we, we've used this on many other projects in the past. Um, Al Mako, I believe was one of them, midstates a couple of times. Uh, those are the two off the top of my head that I can think of. But yeah, we've used it several, several times to basically incentivize to recruit those businesses or those households here in town.
The, it's gonna be the second workforce housing tax credit, I think, application we've had, the first was approved. And that was the custody that, that, uh, air was on the resolution from.
Respond to the question about some of our current rentals and that's why we came up with our rental policy. We haven't gotten it off the ground yet, just because it takes time. But it's something brand new that we're just getting going with it. And it's something that is on our radar that we are very concerned about. Cause yeah, we see it too, we live here.
There's also laws and ordinances that we have to abide by as well. And remember, these are other people's properties that we're dealing with, so we have to keep that in mind as well. So I, I mean, we are trying, Ryan does a great job, he's trying to get the, the program off, off the foot. Because this is the first time that we did it, we just started it in January this year. So, uh, it will take a little bit of time and I appreciate your patience and Kathy, thank you for sharing information with us. I, but we don't know about it sometimes until we hear about it, so I'm glad that you do, so thank you.
And I think part of it too is when they're investing upwards of twelve million dollars, I think they will have an incentive to make sure they keep the value that they've invested. And make sure that it doesn't go downhill like some of the others have been. So that's, that's one protection, at least for quite a while, when you've invested that much, they're going to want to keep that value. Um, and as you saw from the photos, they're, they're hoping to keep as much of the historic nature of the building as they can, which I think is also. Positive because there is a lot of history there and some neat things, um, it's. Um, I've toured some of the this campus too, and just seeing what when they've exposed what's behind in some of those rooms and the brickwork and some of those things are those neat things you see in some of those lofts and apartments these days. There's a lot there to work with to give it a lot of character. I think there were several. One was all their other facilities down on the other campus, so their infrastructure is out there now, their leadership's out there. They've got dining out there and laundry services and all sorts, their their medicals, professionals, their lab. So if a resident needs labs or x-rays, they have to cart them across town. So a lot of it's consolidating onto that current campus. And and then the other aspect is, you know, to keep this going forward, and then they also want to make it for seniors to have more of the home feeling, so their new campuses is going to have more of that type of a feel. So, um, you know, this one had from a long-term care facility become outdated, so it was either invest, they would have to invest up here to to bring it up to what seniors are looking for today in living standards and things like that. Um, and then also comes down to what they would have to invest to, and Story Medical wouldn't be able to invest and then recoup that either, because there's all sorts of things with, like you heard about the brown field with asbestos and things like that, if they're going to mess with the walls inside, which is what kept the Ames folks from wanting to touch the property.
Didn't they, aren't they expanding out there more room?
Yeah, they're adding, they're adding size to to their operations. They're adding memory care and things like that, that that requires a different footprint. So there's a lot of reasons why they're moving out. That's a very good question. But the bones of the structure are good. I think that's I mean, the 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 actual framing of it is still very strong. So from that regard, there is value there, and that's what these folks are seeing. Looks like we have another question or.
Those, so I I was one of the people that toured that those campuses, and I did not take those pictures, and no, Brenda did not either, but we have seen the inside of them, and that is what they actually look like. They do look very nice. Uh, i- if you guys are up in Cedar Rapids, and any any time, I would encourage you to drive by it, because they're very well kept, and the onsite manager that that is there would be willing to show you around as well. I believe the first one was a was the initial rendering, but the other ones were actual pictures of inside the apartments.
And what I can say, too, I didn't even realize until Brenda got up there when she said the Smolokov's building, because when I was in Cedar Rapids last fall, I remember going, dang, they did a really nice job renovating this building, so I had no idea that that was that architect's work. But it stood out when I was there, how nice that building had looked and turned out.
So what the old school building, um, they actually so they they had to do a lot of historical side of things there. They they weren't able to renovate some of the things because the historical side of it. Um, so they have very large hallways in there. They have a lot of stuff. I mean, really, the new things that are in there are going to be some of the floor flooring, uh, flooring, sorry. Um, your cabinets, paint, but um, the windows are new. I mean, they look really nice. Um, and if Brenda or I are going to be up in Cedar Rapids, I'd be happy to take pictures of it when I'm up there and do that, but. Yep. Yep, you're right. It always looks a little different. Yeah. Yep. Once, once this is, if it is approved by the state, they will be able to start that that process with us, and before they're actually able to do anything, they will have to submit plans to us on on what they're planning on doing. Um, you could, but it's the problem is like they said before, we don't own it. If they follow the codes and if they follow the rules, so I really make them do something they don't.
A lot of our codes go off of the state urban design, same with our our trees, as they go off of the SUDAS.
Yeah. In essence, there'll be an opportunity for comment. Um, but the city doesn't have a mechanism to deny it if it meets the minimum code requirements. So, um, you know, historically, we've had developers who they want to hear what the community um, is concerned about. So there will be that opportunity. But in terms of what will be approved, the city is is a little bit handicapped in what's required under the code.
Everybody agrees right now.
Yeah, my understanding is they're going to start with the old clinic side and then work their way over as the long-term care residents move out, so they would intend to start over at the clinic in the fall if it moves. I believe so. Correct, Brenda? If everything's approved on schedule.
Are you talking about the hospital? Are you talking about the parking lot to the west? That's owned by the Story Ca- uh, Story County Board and, um, yes.
There's a big one in the south.
South, you're saying, okay.
Old Park.
I think that's, they own that too, I think. Almost sure they do. Yeah, Story County Hospital is who who owns that as well.
I'm curious, have you, um, why did what brought up earlier? Uh, the big application. You know, I I know what's on me because I'm hearing about the ship. However, you know, he always he had a couple of comments for the city of folks to give, you know, thirty thousand dollars. But here's the stuff. So it's kind of long, yes, and we really, really, um, this this particular application is old. So in a perfect world, I'd have a moment four times a year if we get a gap to projects. And then the crush trying to get things in. I'm just wanting to hear application. It's really a big practice. I mean, um, trying to get enough details together, get an application together. Having a few tests too. Um, and the other puzzle was wasn't till last week that the hospital board of directors three to eleven. So again, that that piece and that transaction was between the hospital board episode. That that had to happen um, before we could even move to the process of of being have to be able to have site control or the state's not going to approve a project whereby they were very competitive tax players only to have an enemy say, well, I wanted to develop that, but I didn't, I didn't have that's really, it's in very full transparency. Those are the two things on why we couldn't come to the council. Oh, that was done. We couldn't supers efforts of the hospital. Actually, therefore, I remember now what's been worked. That's actually when the I've been the letter and it's had counted on, and then the captain reacted to it. It's just like negotiating. Letter of intent, again, all credit came into ground, we stayed up.
I just got fully briefed last week, so they I know they've had developers in and out, but yeah, by the time I knew this was pretty serious, it was just in the last week or so.
Well, and they too are elected officials, so there may be, they may have information that they're able to share as well and can be communicated with. Those are folks that some of those folks I know personally, and I trust that they're not sending us into a lake somewhere. You know, I do, I just, I'm really confident in their um, in their, in their capacity.
And I will say they have been pretty picky too, because there were other developers they were not comfortable with, and they didn't proceed with discussions because they weren't comfortable that it was going to end up in the right hand. So the hospital just hasn't been waiting for the first person to come along that had interest. They've had people with interests that wasn't the right fit for the community that they sent on their way. Okay. Any other council discussion or action? Don't, oh, get a motion, you correct, correct, okay. Oh.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution one oh six.
Second. Brian, Steve, further discussion on the resolution. Being none, council, please vote. That is approved. Um, again, want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I know we have addresses. I don't know if there's emails or not in there, but you can always leave those in case there's more information um, that comes along, and then if you want the PowerPoint, again, you can leave your info and we can send it to you too. And happy to discuss, any of us are happy to discuss after tonight. Um, and thanks to for those of you who did reach out by email. That also is helpful to to know that there are questions we need to answer.
Yeah, and stay tuned, because uh, I think Brad or Tor, I don't know who said it, in the discussions that we've had quite a few developers that have actually changed stuff because of public input, so they will. I'm not saying they will, but you know, they're going to look at it. So input when we get the site plan, because we'll probably have input too. Just do your best or ask or whatever, or we do a pretty good job of keeping everything on the website best we can when it's not last minute like this, but yeah, so email, someone will email you back. All I don't know who all I talked to this weekend, but quite a few of you, so call me anytime. It's okay.
And we've had a lot of discussions too about improving the aesthetic appeal coming up Sixth Street, so very much is something you want to make sure is is a plus and not a negative coming up Sixth Street, because we have enough places that I go by and go, oh, I never noticed that that looks so not good before. Okay, so we will move to B, which is approved purchase of the wheel loader.
Waiting on you. Ah, we're gonna make your work for it, Joe. I get this, so, um, that's kind of the way I come in here anymore, to let these guys do uh, do the stuff that they want and uh, so we're at twenty years on our on our loader. Um, and Mike can probably tell you a little bit more. He was there to purchase that, um, the efficiency. Uh, you know, everything's going up in price anymore, so I think if we can get one now and it lasts us another twenty years. I I think that we'll be ahead of the game. Questions as far as the loader goes? So the, I was comparing the sheets a little bit that you guys sent us. I didn't spend three hours on it, which I'm sure you guys spent more time than that. Is the one that we want to, you want approved, is it comparable to the the first Volvo or the one with all the accessories? There was two different bids on that on that second loader? Okay, so it's got all the options at the the options that they put on the second one. Yes. Okay. Okay. So it's comparable to the second one? Okay, that's what I was, that's what I yeah.
Question?
Move to approve option one.
Second, Jason, Dane. Now, for the discussion, council, please vote. Hey, that's approved. Now that you've proved that, it looks like Joe wants a snowblower for the wheel loader, so we'll move on to the purchase of a snowblower for a real letter.
Yeah.
This day then.
Or once again, um, Mike can attest to this, the efficiency of of removing snow on Main Street, blowing back drifts, whatever, um, we've kind of learned now that the weather, the snows are, our snowblower just kind of pushes it. Um, Mike's been many a times trying to unclog that. Uh, so with our research, the auger-type snowblower seems to be the the way to go with this. Um, this is also when you're running the blower, you have a controller here, so you're driving, steering, this has controller, so you can focus on the pile, move it, do whatever. Um, so that's.
The snowblower doesn't run itself. You gotta still put this on the expensive wheel loader we just bought.
Unfortunately, yeah. So, yes, that's where we're at. Oof, I don't want to go back to bucketing Main Street.
To accept the quote. Option one.
Second, Barb, Dane. In your discussion, council, please vote.
Right, Council Joe? I didn't bring it this time. The old one on trade? The old snowblower on trade? Yes. I didn't see it in the memo. That's why I asked. Yes. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, so now we'll move on into reports, starting with city administration.
All right, well, um, had our meeting last week for our bond rating review, uh, met with a group of people to talk about a housing rehab uh, program. I reached out to some other city administrators and have some pretty good ideas from Forest City, Lake Park, and Algonquin that'll I'll share with the group to see if we can work on that. Some of those utilize LMI funding, which is something that we have not really been able to find a use for, so it would be nice if we can put that back into uh, some of the properties that we have in town. I met with H R Green and Tim, talked about trails, uh, grants that we're going to try to go after to hu- to help with, uh, Nineteenth Street. Uh, will be very competitive, so we'll we'll hopefully we will have a chance for that. Brenda and I last week went down to Des Moines to meet with uh, NIPA and Metro Area Planning Department, so we could talk with them about C D B G and facade grants uh, for that, and Main Street has been I think they just actually sent out an email today, talking, asking who would be interested in those facade grants as well, so, um, and we had a lot of wastewater meetings this last week, and I'm sure we'll continue to have a lot of wastewater meetings, so um, other than that, I have my report that I sent you. If you guys have any questions regarding that, I'd be more than happy to answer those right now.
Jordan, you mentioned downtown parking regulation.
Yes, I need to, thank you for bringing that up. I don't know why I didn't have that written down. Uh, but yeah, so, um, I got an email, um, stating that, uh, they're all for, you know, the different timeframes for uh, north side, south side, all-night parking, but um, kind of concerns with the time limit and or restricting people from parking for longer than ten, twenty, thirty minutes. Um, so m- my question to you guys was, are you okay, comfortable with moving forward with what we have choosing the north side and the south side of streets and kind of not worrying about the time limits at this time and see how everything goes? Talk with the business owners, see how they are liking it, and then if they would like, um, some some side of, some sort of a time limit, then we can talk about that in the future, but I didn't want to Change all these things right away downtown and. I, I just wanted, wanted to get used to some of it before we make all the additions.
I'd like to see us proceed with an ordinance now, just with the, um. Overnight parking alternating sites twice a week, so we can go ahead and sort of remove that doubt about our, our downtown, uh, housing projects. So those folks have somewhere to park overnight at that point, and then if we have to go back and make some adjustments or add some new things, we can talk about that later.
Might be good to have a conversation with Evy too, because I think a lot of it's driven by her event rentals, and I don't know if she has a way to. Encourage people not to park in front of businesses on six or not, or how much control she has with the people who rent it to get that message out. Um, but that could be a conversation we have in the next couple of weeks too to. Roach that with her.
Yeah, and I think Main Street wants to do some, I'll call it, marketing to. Direct people to the parking lots we have, so that they might get a higher rate of utilization than they do now.
All right, so if it's all right with you guys, I will move forward with what we have in place right now. I will send over to Emily, Main Street Director, so she can share amongst the board. And then we'll, as long as I get Main Street's okay on it, we'll. Put it back on to the council and let you guys vote on it.
And let's also try to schedule a meeting with Evy, just so we can talk about that other issue too, while we're.
Timing, the short time parking, I think we were talking that more on Sixth Street than the.
Yeah, yeah, that, that.
This is all side streets.
Yeah, so there, but we were going to try to do it all in one ordinance if we were going to make a downtown ordinance change, so.
Yeah, because hopefully the Camelot will have that problem some.
Yeah, hopefully the Camelot.
Yeah. I agree with Steve, that we can always tweak it. If we need to. Okay, but we should probably get going on it.
Anything else for Jordan? Moving on for reports, I just had a few things I did want to reiterate what Jordan talked about with the housing. Task force, a lot of that came out of the twenty forty plan and a couple of different. That tasks, we tasked that group with this. One is to compile what resources already there. Um, that we need to know about that are regional resources, grant resources, things like that, to help people access those types of things, um, and have that as a good. Resource on our website. And the other aspect is how can we use those LMI funds for things? Like weatherproofing, structural things, heating, cooling, um, for folks that are low income to help with, keep those. Um, owner, primarily owner occupied in that case, but keep them to the higher standard. So, other than that, I did want to congratulate just Main Street in general. I think it's pretty incredible to look around and see a couple of new businesses coming to town and just. Between Cubbies and Something Blue and all of that. I think there's, there's just a lot of exciting stuff going on. Um. Which leads me also to Pizza Palooza. I want to thank everyone who helped with that. I know we had a lot of city volunteers, city staff, the fire department was instrumental. Lot of community folks from all over the community, and I think just being able to come together and have another success year celebrating the community and. Luckily, Mother Nature decided to be nice that day, even though we thought she wasn't going to be and had a really nice crowd. I think that. Crowd during the day downtown was even a lot bigger than last year. Um, the vendors were really happy. I, our stores were full. I've just watched people go in and out, so I. It was, I think, really great to showcase everything going on and I know the group's already talking about next year. So with that, any questions for me? Council reports, um, I'll just echo your thoughts about Pizza Palooza and about our Main Street businesses being full and. The vendors and the concert and everything just was, was a, a great day. Um, I do want to specifically thank Brian for, um, supplying the trailer for the free stage, um, for Lincoln Way Energy Stage. Um, we had some very good acts on that stage and, and a lot of people enjoyed them, so. A lot, a lot of people would thank the city staff for the first ones there in the morning and the last ones out that night, so thanks to them too.
Guess I'll triple up on that one, because yeah, it was a great day, seeing everybody out there pretty much and, uh. Lot of folks down at downtown. And all those hours of meetings and meetings and meetings that we've put together is well worth it, just to see everybody having a really good time downtown, so.
For folks who don't know the full story, the owner of Something Blue, the bridal shop, came to Pizza Palooza last year, and so when she needed a new place to move her business because her. Lease and ink and he was running out, she thought of Nevada because of how much fun she had last year at Pizza Palooza. So we already have a downtown business from last year's event, which makes it feel worthwhile.
Worth it right there.
Mm-hmm. And for those who don't know. Now we need a new business for next year that can add that. I gave a plug, there you go.
And going back to that, Something Blue is the business that's going into the U S Bank Building that's been sitting empty since. When they closed.
Twenty twenty one.
Several years.
Something going in there.
Speaking of old buildings from the sixties.
I can talk about old buildings too, uh, Camelot Theater update, that's a segue, like, you know, yeah, smooth. Uh, work's continuing on the windows and apartments upstairs, uh, they're all demoed and we're getting bids to, uh, put stuff back in them. Uh, our next classic movie is Caddyshack on June eleventh. We'll have the band The Remedy there on the seventeenth and an open mic night. I expect to see everybody there, especially you Dane. Uh, be in June, be in June, you'll see more on that. Uh, Main Street also, uh, Emily, our director, was at, uh, the, the spring workshop and, uh, she learned. A lot about entrepreneurship, um, and how we can cultivate that in Nevada. Uh, our challenge grant, that's a hundred thousand dollar grant for a business, uh, will be opening in June. There's a lot of interest in that right now, and there's a golf fundraiser June ninth at Indian Creek.
Their council reports. And move staff and have. Oh, Tim. Like who was on the corner?
Uh, just a couple of things to touch on tonight. Um, Hattery Park Shelter is moving along pretty well. Um, there'll be a little bit of a lull here, quiet time, he's waiting on some roofing materials to steal, but. Uh, the structure is essentially up, um, looks really good. Uh, pool opens next Thursday, so, um, a lot of work still to get done out there. Uh, Field House is progressing with, uh, side panels going up, roofing going on, and they started pouring concrete today. So hopefully that'll be a everyday process this week and make a lot of progress on that. Um, I talked to the contractor and would like to have you folks out before your next council meeting on June twelve at five o'clock. So we'll provide the hard hats, so just wear some good walking shoes and, uh, we'll send out a reminder in, in advance of that. So, any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thanks.
Charlie Starbuck finished his two weeks of, uh, schooling to take his distribution one, so he'll be taking that test here shortly. Been flashing fire ignorance, hoping to get them done. Uh, in other news. Last year and a half or so, the EPA has been cracking down on PFOS, which is, uh, they call it a forever chemical. From Fire Foam Industries use it. I mean, it's in your cooking utensil, it. It's everywhere, but once it gets in the groundwater or lake, it doesn't break down. And the D N R. Has been selecting different communities, because there are communities around us that have it in their drinking water, and they set the sim, the limit so low that. If you have it, you have to change your treatment process. It'd be really expensive, but. The D N R tested all our wells for drinking water. And luckily, we don't have any, so that was good news. Other than that, that's about all I got. Any questions?
Water pollution control. Just our regular operation monitoring and maintenance of the wastewater facility and the lift station and the remote flow basin as usual. We repaired the exhaust fan on top of the digester building roof, uh. Prepared electric solenoid valve on one of the sludge pumps in the digester building. Lift station pump had a failure at fifteenth and age. It's been pulled and replaced with our spare. And we, uh, cleaned another slug out of the research folks in the digester building. I'm, it's on the other side. And that's it. Any questions?
I don't see anything.
So we've just been doing a couple of street repairs, water breaks. Um, we've been working on sewer jet maintenance of, uh, of our equipment. Um, et cetera, so any other questions? Thank you.
Brenda, do you have anything else?
I don't really have a lot to report. We're, uh, still in the hiring process for one officer, but that's continuing to progress, and since it's spring summertime. Uh, developing a plan for nuisance bait, that's for the summer, but answer any questions you guys have. I didn't spend any money.
Street farm has it covered.
New vehicles.
Uh-huh. Right now, we're up to date on the vehicles that we've had ordered, so.
Couple of things to, uh, bring up. The, uh, owner of five thirty six Fourth Street has been moving along really well. It's about three quarters of the way she rocked. He's, uh, removed a tree in order for Alliance to run him a new line in. He's had, um. The electrical inspected by an electrician here in town. Um. It's, it's progressing pretty well, so I have pictures, all that stuff, if you like, of all the progressions that have been going through. Um. He's going to rip it this summer in order to save the skylight that's in there and things like that, so. It's, it's moving along. Very well and at a pretty decent clip, so. Uh, the majority of all of it has been scrubbed clean, um. The front entry has been reinforced after being, uh, soda blasted and things like that, so. I don't think there's any more, um, ash really left in there, so it's all been cleaned and disposed of. Uh. Uh, a week and a half ago. I, uh, met with two gentlemen. At the gas station at Eighth and Lincoln. Uh, they were discussing with the security company and another contractor. And they're an outfit out of Alabama and they're to be reporting up here. This week sometime to start working on both of the gas stations in order to get. The convenience store side of it opened back up. So I have a new phone number and name and I've called it twice. So hopefully I'll get a. Call back soon, so. Um. Yeah, that's all I got for you.
Open the store.
Correct, that's from talking to the contractor and, uh. Employee that is their game plan. So. Yeah, I.
Will believe it if it happens.
Yeah, same, same. So, any other questions? Thank you.
I'm good. I don't have anything to add tonight.
Karen?
Working on the, finalizing the budget amendment and, um, reviewing all the bond, um, issuance paperwork and. Um, here for the end of the year, I believe this three years almost.
I see Brandon online, from H R Green, anything?
I don't have anything to report. Uh, but, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ask anything for Brandon.
Brandon, I've been asked about the detour once, um, S fourteen North under the tracks is closed. Where, any idea where the detour is going?
The S fourteen. Sorry, I'm getting feedback, so it's hard to. Talk and. Oh, I would have to look into that. I'm not, uh. Lead on that project, um, and I'd have to get back to you. I'll, uh, look into that and send you an email.
Okay, thank you.
Karen, okay. So that's it for reports. The next thing would be closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty one point five one I. To evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment firing. Performance or discharges being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irritable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual requests to close session.
Who did go disclosed?
Second.
Jason and Dane. Any new discussion, council please vote. Okay, yeah, give a couple of minute break and then we'll start.